Welcome to the Delta County School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Dennis Anderson, I'm publisher of the Delta County Independent. Thank you to the audience that is present and online for being here today. Thank you to our managing editor, Lucas Vader, for setting all this up. And finally, thank you to the candidates for wanting to serve our community as school board members. Thank you very much. Christina Heinz will be absent this evening. Her families suffered tragedy, our thoughts and prayers for her family this evening. So, we'll start with the rules, and then we'll get into introductions. The rules, we'll have an introduction period for each candidate, two minutes. They'll introduce themselves, speak about themselves, and then each question, we have seven questions. Each question, they'll have two minutes to answer. And then, we debate about them one minute. We'll see where we're at in the forum. Hopefully, we can do two minutes closing statement for each one. Our candidates are Christina Heinz, Sheldon Keir. For District One, District Five, we have Jennifer McGavin, Adina Kreutz, and Autumn Nguyen. Okay, so Sheldon, if you want to start with the beginning introduction, and then we'll go down low.
So, I would like to just maybe start with a moment of silence for Christine's family, because she's going through quite a bit right now. And I would just like to start for a very brief moment of silence. Okay, thank you for that. We just need to keep them in our thoughts and prayers, because it is important. I'm Sheldon Keir, I've lived in Delta County for approximately thirty-six years now. I've had my kids go through the Delta County School District System, and now my grandkids are there. I also was volunteering to help out some of the ag programs at Cedar Edge and Delta High School. My passion kept growing from there to go ahead and run for the school board and see what we can do to help out our kiddos. I'm going to talk a little bit about some stuff that's come out the last week or so on some Facebook things. So, the first one is about a letter that came from CHASA. It was started by District Forty-nine School Board President Lori Thompson. She sent the letter out to many different school boards, hoping that we would have school boards that would sign that, and then the letter would get passed on to other school districts, and we could keep our young women safe in sports, and that they would not allow it. Because CHASA's bylaws three hundred allows for transgender students, athletes, to participate in inter-scholastic activities. So, that board, that letter came out. I had a lot of evidence that it went to the board. It sounds like maybe that the full board didn't get to see that letter. And so, some people on the board did not get to vote on it. However, there was a community member that came forth, we've got the minutes here, on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, and brought this CHASA letter up, and was asking the board to look at it and maybe sign that letter, that she thought it was very important. So, it was there, it was before the board, as far as the board knowing about it. They didn't actually get to see the letter, though. So, we need to kind of clear that up, because it kind of got stopped up with some administration and board president. Then, there's also been some stuff that came out with a motion.
Five seconds.
What's that?
Five seconds.
Okay, a motion, and I have minutes for everything here. We uphold the Christian rights of some of our teachers. That did come before the board, I do have that. I also have an article from Delta County Independent that talks about it. Also talks about a book that they, in the same article, and it shows that the motion failed one to four, because there was no second on the floor to move it forward. So, those, there is evidence that all this stuff was...
We do need to go to the next one.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Hello, I'm Adina Kreutz. I am from Crawford, and my husband and I are farmers, and I am also a draft horse rehabber. I'm also an aunt of not only my own two nephews and niece, but also, because of being youth leader, we have taken the role and title of aunt of many. So, I am an English teacher. I do, I'm actively tutoring, and I tend to gravitate towards kids with unique needs and spectrum kids, but not always. Sometimes it's just kids that need a little bit of advocacy on how to navigate the educational system. And so, I love to talk about education. I have a lot that's on my mind. If you've read through any of the multiple publications, you've read many of the things that I have to say. I'm looking forward to hearing the questions, so I can be specific. I do care a lot about literacy, and it's something that is very important to the cognitive ability of students as they move on in life. And I just am not going to back down from wanting excellence in our education system. And I think we can achieve it, I really do. So, I'm really looking forward to having a seat on the board and seeing what kind of changes we can make positively for kids.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer?
Yep. Good evening, thank you everybody for coming out to see us, and thank you DCI for the invitation. I'm Jennifer McGavin, if you don't know already. And for the past four years, I have had the privilege of serving as your District Five representative on the Delta County School Board. When I ran the first time, I promised to bring balance, transparency, and common sense, and I have kept that promise. We have faced tight budgets, facility repairs, and rising costs, but we have stayed steady. We've improved teacher pay, added mental health supports, and made sure every community from Crawford to Cedar Edge continues to have a strong local school presence. I'm proud that our academic scores are rising, especially in literacy, where our district is now above the state average and still improving. But test scores are only one piece of the story. The real measure of success is whether our students feel supported, our teachers feel valued, and our schools stay sustainable. That's the balance I work for. I bring a mix of experience that keeps me grounded. Twenty-one years running a small business in the North Fork Valley, a background in microbiology and business, and the discipline of fourth-degree black belt. I read every line of the budget, I visit our schools often, and I listen, because good decisions come from understanding the details and the people that they affect. I'm running again, because I want to keep building on what's working. Strong academics, stable finances, and genuine respect across our communities. I love this community, I love this district, and I'm proud of the direction we're heading.
Okay, thank you. Autumn?
Get that microphone a bit closer.
I'd like...
Let me get to mine.
Good evening, and thank you Delta County Independent for hosting this important forum, and to everyone here for taking time to be a part of this conversation about our schools and our community. My name is Autumn Nguyen. I'm running for Delta County School Board, District Five. I am the only candidate in this race with real skin and my three awesome kids. I am a mother of three children who attend Delta County Schools, a senior at North Fork High School. I, oh sorry, a third grader, and a second grader at PKA. My second grader is learning proof of homologism. My perspective as a parent, advocate, and active participant in our schools drives my belief that every student in this county deserves the opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive in a safe, inclusive environment. Every decision I make as a parent and community member begins and ends with students. I see firsthand what is working in our schools and where we can do better. Not from afar, but from daily experience as part of the school community. When I launched this campaign, I made a commitment to focus on four clear pillars. My platform has remained consistent from the very beginning, because these are the values I stand by. Stability, transparency, accountability, and compassion. Pillar one is putting students first. Every policy and budget decision should begin with the question, how will this help students learn, feel safe, and belong? I believe in strong academics, grounded in Colorado standards, and classrooms where teachers can teach and students can explore and grow. My family's experience with the special education system has taught me that inclusion is not only about access, it is about ensuring that every child, regardless of ability or background, is valued and cared and supported. Pillar two is supporting our teachers and staff.
So, Autumn, we're over...
Already?
Yeah, go ahead and wrap it up.
Over three minutes already? Oh, I swear the emails are...
No.
Okay. Pillar, I'll just be quick. Pillar two, supporting our teachers and staff. Pillar three is using our buildings and budgets responsibly. And pillar four is making school governance open and accessible. I am Autumn Nguyen, a mother, an advocate, and a neighbor who believes that when we stand up for our schools, we strengthen our entire community, and I would be honored to earn your trust. Thank you.
Okay, so, first question, and we'll start with Adina. And I will say the question twice, okay? What's the single most important change you want to see in this district over the next four years? So, the question is, what's the single most important change you want to see in this district over the next four years?
Transparency in communication between the district and parents and students. I hear it over and over and over again when I'm talking to folks, that parents don't feel heard, kids don't feel heard, and that's got to change if we're going to have a vital, vibrant educational district. How we get there? Part of it is me being willing to listen, and then take that back to the board, and say, these are the things I'm hearing, what are we going to do about it? The other thing is talking to the administration. And then also, in my mind, it's empowering the folks that are asking me to listen to them, to give them tools to take back to the situation that they're struggling with. So, number one, giving them confidence that they can have a framework to work through, and that it works. And actually, it's really interesting, because even as I've been running, I have been doing that. I've been asking, Superintendent Gibson has been overwhelmingly gracious to talk, to listen to me, and let me ask her questions on how to navigate some of this, and she has given me guidance to take back to the kids and the parents. Some of those have already resulted in a resolution of the situation, which is fantastic in my mind. That's what it's all about. So, I really, really, really believe that if parents, students, and administration are communicating, we have great things we can do.
Thank you. Jennifer, you want to, you want me to repeat, or you're good?
I'm fine.
Okay.
I think one of the biggest changes that I would like to see is that we are able to keep all the children in our schools safe and feeling welcome and wanted. And these are children from all backgrounds. We should not be marginalizing or stereotyping kids who are, are just simply there trying to grow up and be themselves. And I see this also as an issue for our whole community, because our schools are only as strong as the adults around them and in the communities. And when the adults do not model good behavior, then the kids are going to grow up and pick on the other kids even more than they tend to do. So, I would like to see us training the teachers how to respond to harassment or bullying even more than we do now. And I'd like to see our community pick up and do its job, and make sure that these kids are safe and welcome.
Okay. Autumn, are you okay with the question, or do you need to repeat?
I'll read the question.
Okay.
Transparency, of course, and I'd like to see responsible on budgets, or responsive, being more responsible with resources, our budgets more transparent, and our buildings being used responsibly. District Five has something going on right now. They're worried about schools consolidating or closing. And I think that we need to focus as a community, there is a task force, there are things like that happening, to protect our schools, to make sure schools aren't closing, their communities. When a school closes, it may be, maybe it loses its center, essentially. And I know our residents are very worried about that District Five. I've heard about it almost at every forum, every gathering I've talked about, or talked with people. And I think if we find a way to use, to use everything responsibly, instead of having empty buildings, we can protect each educational learning type and building that way Crawford, Payonea, and Hockeys keep their elementary schools. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sheldon, ready?
I'm going to ask you to ask the question.
Sure. What's the single most important change you want to see in this district over the next four years?
I'd like to get our, get back to the basics of education. And a lot of what I'm hearing, so it's listen and validate and respond to community members, teachers, students, et cetera. And what I'm hearing is that, you know, we have a lot of distractions in the school. Some of it has to do with disciplinary problems. Some of it has to do with outside agendas that are being pushed into our school districts. And I would like to see us maybe try to overcome some of these issues, get back to, like I said, the basics of education, and maybe limit the amount of distractions that are coming into the school. It seems like we need direct explicit instruction to our students, one-on-one, where the student's directly listening to the teacher. We've got in a habit of making it more of a group discussion with the teachers and having kids in a group. But if it's a one-on-one, the teacher's able to find out if the kids are mastering what she's telling them. In a group setting, it gets missed, and we tend to have some failures. And getting back to, I don't know if you've noticed, but in any of the news, but Louisiana's done a very good job of getting their scores up, and they're doing much better in the whole system. And they're doing that by getting back to the basics and using stuff like phonics and going back to flashcards, some of the old school stuff. And I would really like to see our schools get back to that, and not worrying so much about other, other interferences that are going on in our school system.
Okay.
Back to the basics.
Sheldon? Okay, so we'll start with Jennifer on the next question. How should the district respond when there is significant community opposition to a school board decision? How should the district respond when there is a significant community opposition to a school board decision?
Right. You would have to define significant first, but the school board has been elected, and they've been elected to represent the community. I think that the school board takes into consideration not only people's voices, but people's voices who aren't quite as loud. And they do collect information from a lot of people, and you may not see that, because it is a one-on-one discussion with the community. We also hold meetings when there's a big topic coming up, and we do listen to people's ideas every meeting if they choose to present them. I think that, I don't know what you would want to do when the school board decides, whether it's because of a law, or because their community picked them to represent and make the decision what they should do differently. But a small minority of very vocal people should not be able to dictate what the school board ends up deciding. The school board has many interests.
Okay. Autumn?
My answer is going to be short, it's listen. Listen to your community. And what you said they do, they get emails, they have meetings and everything, but truly, listen. Have, you know, advisory councils, and come to meetings, public comment, back and forth, because, just because I think one way doesn't mean my entire community thinks that way. So, it should, you just need to listen. Thank you.
Okay. Sheldon?
So, first off, I think it's a great thing when we have people come before our board to talk about issues and bring them up. That's what my expectation is of our community, and I'm delighted when it, when it happens, so that we know about it. The big thing is, yeah, first off, we need to listen. And then sometimes we need to slow down. It seems like we get a little bit rushed and worried, and we may need, it sounds like it's a significant issue, time to investigate, get other input from community members, et cetera. So, first off, we're going to listen, take our time, investigate everything that we can, and then try to come up with a plan and respond. But make sure that we're very transparent in front of everybody, what's, what we're thinking, which direction we're headed to make the decision, and keep the community involved the whole time, listening to them as we move forward, and try to be, have good, clear reasons of why we're making the decisions we are. And transparency is the key. And that way, we, you know, we validate what, what they're saying, and then hopefully, we respond with the, with, you know, with respect and how we're handling the situation.
Adina?
I just want one point of clarification.
Okay.
The question is, after a decision has been made?
To a board? Let me read it again. How should the district respond when there is a significant, when there is significant community option to a board decision?
So, it's already been made?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the way I'm interviewing.
So, already been made, and people are furious about it, is how I take that. First thing is, put myself out there. Let them call me, let them write me an email. Probably, if I hear that people have opposition, I'm going to want to be talking to them. I'm going to want to invite them. Let's have a town hall where you sit down and tell me. And then let me be there just to listen, write down all the things that they bring forth. Really pretty simple. And then, if they're willing to hear the discussion, which is all public anyway, I'm not there to represent the entire board. I would be there to represent my take on what's happening and what the discussion centered around. And then invite them to come to the board with public comment, expressing, and even give them the courage to say, we want to hear. That invitation is huge to the public. And it seems to me that is the way forward. If I vote in a way that upsets someone, I want them to come to me and talk with me about it, if they didn't realize the ramifications of what I was voting on.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so the next question, we'll start with Autumn. How do you define the role of a school board member versus the role of a district administrator
So, administration, they keep everything rolling. That is not what I feel, I mean, we help in that aspect. But they are the professionals that are there to keep the teachers, you know, all, everything rolling within the buildings. School board works with them, the administration, to help create policy that helps them, basically. And we go out with our community and talk with our community and represent them. Hopefully, represent them to the best of our ability. That's the difference, whereas they're in, in the buildings, making sure everything runs smoothly, and the school board is doing things to help them, if that makes sense. I, I've never been on a school board, so, yeah. She's been on it for four years, so she probably knows it'd be a learning experience for me, but I'm so excited to learn that experience.
Sheldon?
Could you read the question, please?
How should this, excuse me, how do you define the role of a school board member versus the role of a district, of district administration?
Yeah, so the, the board member works for the community. They're the one that votes them in, so that's the boss. And then, from there, the board is there to write policies and guide kind of the direction of many different aspects of the school district. And then it's the administration, if we write good policies and we've got that guidance for them, then it's up to the administration to push those policies through to the rest of the school district and make sure they're, they're followed. And they kind, they kind of work for the board at that point. They've, they have a huge job, and they, they have to keep everything running smoothly, follow all those policies, but then they're gathering tons of information and bringing it back to the board, and it may be budgetary, it may be buildings, it may be how our students are doing. And they're out there trying to gather all that information and keep us informed, and so that we can make decisions. And they are going to also bring information to us that helps guide our decisions as well. So, they've got a big decision, and we have to rely on each other, and I think have a very good, close relationship, and, and be able to work together very closely, and communicate very well with, with each other.
Ready, Adina?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, my role as a school board member, I learned this when my dad was a school board president when I was growing up. So, I saw him navigate through the administration, but he also went through a fair bit of struggle with teacher issues and things like that, where they had to really sit down and be willing to ask the tough questions, be willing to hear the people that were saying tough things to them, that wanted the, the district to maybe make decisions that weren't popular. So, I watched my dad do that, and it was really hard to see him be in the community and essentially get chewed out for, you know, something that was happening in the school when it was really within the administration's realm. And so, he became, what I noticed is, he became kind of that liaison, where he's like, well, hey, did you go and talk to the superintendent? Did you go and talk to that teacher, you know? So, advocate, did you talk to the principal that's in the building? You know, really, really trying to engage the conversation. So, I see, because I'm elected, I see that, like Sheldon said, my boss, they're the voters, and they're the parents, right? So, I need to be listening to them, and then taking that back to the board as a whole and to the administration, letting the administration tell me where something is happening that may not be something that's broader that I understand, I didn't have all of the knowledge. I can go back to those families, I can go back to those taxpayers and say, hey, this is a big picture. This is something I didn't know about, the administration told me about this. Let's, let's sit down and work this out together, because this is confusion. And there's nothing positive in confusion, in my mind. So, let's... getting the conversation started and then helping the administration be set up to do what they do well. I mean, they spend a lot of time and energy learning how to administrate well. Let's just set them up for success like I want the students.
Okay. Jennifer?
A, a school board director is a particular kind of leader. We listen, we learn and we discuss and collaborate with the school administration and with parents and with our other constituents. We make decisions that is best for the, the children and the educators and the families. We set the tone of the district by writing policy, setting the district goals and the budget priorities. And we ensure accountability to all applicable laws and citizens in this district. We are also part of the outreach. So we go out and talk to everybody. We hold meetings and we try to get around and see everybody in the school district. What the board isn't is what the administration is. We don't micromanage the curriculum. We don't micromanage the budgets. We watch over them. We listen to the experts and we make decisions in conjunction with the administration. We also don't hire and fire. We are the cheerleaders and we are the oversight and a good board provides excellent top-down management and really helps the administration do their job. And it creates good working and learning environments when a board is working well.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll start with Sheldon on the next question. How will you approach, how will you approach debates over curriculum content, including social studies, science and health education? How will you approach debates over curriculum content, including social studies, science and health education?
Well, I'm gonna I've already developed some resources to kind of help me look at curriculum. And I will use a lot of different resources uh to give me information, insight and educate me on curriculum because I've already done that. And I'm going to continue to do that no matter what. I've already established those relationships and I will move forward with them. Then I'm going to take um a great deal of time and thought and study that myself and try to gain um other information besides um just talking to one or two people and so that I, I've got a great perspective um from different viewpoints. And so then I'll spend a ton of time studying that and trying to make the best decisions for uh first off, our kids. And let's keep our kids safe and let's give them a, a curriculum that um I think, again, I'm going to stress, get back to the basics of education. I think we're proving more and more that that has to happen a little bit and that's what I'm going to be looking for in the curriculum. So um it'll be a long process and it's something I don't think we should rush. I think we need to get started early on it. Um, so that we have time to really delve into curriculum and ideas. So um I would spend a bunch of time studying, looking into every bit of information that I can. And then we need to look at a curriculum, not only for the students, but as a curriculum that works well for our teachers to teach. Okay. We can't forget that part of it. So we need to take that time to look at the teacher's aspect of all curriculum as well.
Okay. Ready?
Yes. So I will tell you, I love debate. I absolutely love the wonderful pieces of it that come out of debate. And I will tell you that there is always something I learn. I always have the opportunity to engage someone that has a differing viewpoint than myself. And that is a fantastic container for learning what the community wants, what parents want, what taxpayers want, what teachers need, what administrators are choosing to bring forth to the board. So for me, when, since you used the word debate, I would very much embrace having those opportunities come before the board and then offering another opportunity for somebody to have an engagement. And it doesn't hurt to put it into a certain set of parameters, just like what you did with this forum. You have rules. You want us to abide by them. Why can't we set that up the same way and let people feel like they're being heard? And in the same sense, if we set it up like you did here today, then there's opportunity for people to feel heard because they are going to have their two minutes or three minutes to be able to express their concern. So I see debate as very welcomed and an opportunity to learn from each other. Because again, I don't see everything. I am one person.
Okay.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. How will you approach debates over curriculum content, including social studies, science and health education?
All right. Well, I believe that we have spent a lot of time learning and trying to educate the public on uh social studies, not so much on science at this point. Um, because science is science. It's a fact and that's what we should be teaching. The debate on the social studies curriculum is something that we will probably have to continue to do. And I think outreach, explaining and helping educate the constituency on the laws, why we do what we do, what the um, what the possibilities within the laws are and how we can fulfill our part of the bargain of getting money from the state and following their curriculums or a curriculum that is of a higher grade. But that is what the law is. If we want money, we're going to follow some of these needs or some of these standards. Thank you. Um, had to thank my brain. I'm sorry. I think that when we do outreach, it is important to listen to people's concerns. And I would also like them to listen to what the answers are. And I'm hopeful that the more time we spend talking to people and having meetings on these issues, the more we can come to an understanding of, of where we are within this structure. It is a very structured system, the public school system. And it's good, but sometimes the people in the district do not understand. And sometimes they won't. Sometimes they will.
Okay.
Sure. Um, how will you approach debates over curriculum content, including social studies, science and health education?
Well, this also, this falls back to my fourth pillar of my campaign promise of open uh, open governance and accessible meeting or accessibility. Um, I also want to say that we have wonderful professionals in our schools who go through and pick curriculums. There's a team and Delta County School District teams. I mean, I know in District Five, when I go in every day, the teachers dedicate their, their lives to picking the correct curriculum and everything like that and being there for our students. Um, but it really, families have a right to come in and, you know, talk about their concerns, whether they're for or against curriculum. So I think that listening, debating, yes, but listening and learning the material ourselves so we can discuss it with families and see, you know, what they like and what they don't like and work together. Thank you.
Okay.
With you. Okay. Remember to Adina on the next question. What is one specific way you would choose to address budget shortfalls? What is one specific way you would choose to address budget shortfalls?
Well, I haven't been privy to all of the information that's in the budget um as a whole, big, big picture thing. So the first thing actually I would do is uh go through it and see where we're spending. I mean, it's not really much different than running a farm or any other business for that matter. You're always there looking for the things that can get cut that won't affect people and it won't put education at risk, right? Yeah. So um it's tough. It's really tough to have to sit there and look through every little line and decide what are the things that we want to have a conversation about. But I think that's important. And I really, at this point, I have come out very publicly and said that I will never vote to close the Montessori in Crawford because I firsthand know what it's like to have a school potentially closed and the, and it's the only one in the community. I grew up in a community very similar to that. So if I say that and yet the pure per pupil cost is high at the Montessori, what am I going to have to do as a board member? I'm going to have to roll up my sleeves and start looking for ways to figure out how to not make the districts suffer for the difference in the cost and yet still retain that building, right? That's what I'm going to have to do. And I'm not afraid of doing that. I don't know all the answers to know what kind, maybe there's grants available. I know I have personally um handed teachers grant opportunities to help them specifically in their classrooms. And they can get those. They, and those are things that tangibly help those teachers to be able to do the teaching that they want to accomplish. So I know it's possible.
Okay. Thank you. Jennifer?
Well, first off, we have a great financial director right now and our finances are in good shape because we have been forward-thinking and we've been responsible. We've even found the money to give teachers raises in all four years of my tenure. But school finances are tricky and the state budget shortfall that is forecast and looming and an unknown future as to the federal funds does make it difficult for us to figure out what is going to be the budget for the next year. I would like to assure people that we have a very healthy fund balance at this point. So one specific way we are going to address budget shortfalls is by using that combined with attrition and retirements if necessary, if the student count goes down to um, to weather and soften the blow. So we have time to make the decisions that we need to make. We're going to look for cuts to the budget that do not directly affect the students immediately, but other kinds of things that we can rein in or not spend. So other um and I think also that we will spend time preparing alternative scenarios because like last year, we did not know if it was going to be a $3 million cut, a one and a half million dollar cut, or as we saw in the end, not really a cut at all. And we can't tell when or why.
Okay. Autumn?
Do you mind repeating?
Uh, what is one specific way you would choose to address budget shortfalls?
Um, so I am for a January reconciliation of enrollment after the October count. That way we have, you know, direct numbers of students in buildings. I also am not for any cl- closures. I'm not for Crawford closing. So I would like to try to look at the budget. I think I see the budget. There's not um, it's, it's there, but I think it could be a little more transparent, in my opinion. Um, but I do think that if we look at our um resources we have, and I keep coming back to this, I apologize, but buildings that are empty, they cost a lot of money to maintain and keep going. That's money that if we um figured out a way to repurpose the building or work with um one Delta County local municipalities to do something with that building to uh get more funding for our district. And I mean District Five, that building is in District Five. Then we don't have to worry about um consolidations. Cause yes, a consolidation would put the two schools together, but that is closing a school. And um, and I don't under, if, if the budget right now is good to go and I'm so grateful that the teachers are getting those bonuses, so yay. Why are we even talking about consolidating them? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Sheldon?
Repeat the question, please.
Sure. Uh, what is one specific way you would choose to address budget shortfalls?
A specific way? I think we're, I'm going to agree that right now, um, we, the school district's done a pretty good job of managing their budgets. Um, however, I do think that there's a lot of cuts coming up. We've seen probably the biggest um increase for capital budgets over the last several years through COVID money, through the bond. And I think we've done a pretty good job at maybe catching up some of the, the capital projects that are going on. So one specifically, I think there's probably that's a place as we look forward, since we've, we've caught it up a little bit, that maybe we can start cutting back. Or we may have to change the way we're doing some of our capital projects if we needed to take money out. And it's been my experience in working with the large budgets is it's typically in capital areas that you can revamp, redraw up, find different equipment. Um, along with that capital is, is with vehicles, different ways to um cut the cost on vehicles and maintenance and maybe not purchasing new vehicles. But typically, my experience has been to kind of go after that capital budget. The last place I want to go after is anything that's educational, anything that affects, affects the kids. And we need to keep our teachers whole as much as possible. And with my experience that I've worked with budgets that got very tight, that's kind of how we managed them and it worked very well.
Okay. Thank you, Sheldon.
Okay. Jennifer, we're starting with you on question six. How should the district respond to threats of violence or bullying, including online harassment? How should the district respond to threats of violence or bullying, including online harassment?
Okay, yeah. Well, um, I do want to talk about bullying tonight. I do want to talk specifically about cyberbullying. It's relevant to me right now because certain online accounts supporters of my opponent have been spreading false and misleading information about myself and others. So even when misinformation is pointed out to them, they just pivot and make up something else. Right now, the fact that no one has spoken up against these posts is mind-blowing to me. When adult, when adults see cyberbullying and stay silent, that speaks volumes about their intentions to stem bullying in the schools. Our schools can only be as safe as we, the adults, make them. Our students are watching right now and they are learning from us. If we wish to lead them, it must be with integrity. It must be with honesty and it must be with respect. And that is how I would tackle this in the schools. I would say that the community needs to step up and pull their own weight.
Okay. Autumn?
Would you repeat the question?
Sure.
I know it's about bullying.
Yeah.
How should the district respond to threats of violence or bullying, including online harassment? How should the district respond to threats of violence or bullying, including online harassment?
I have a daughter in the high school, um, and I've dealt with actually this scenario. And the first thing I did was contact the school. And they were on it. I have never had an issue, and I know people do. So, I'm not trying to say it doesn't happen. But if you say something, if you see something, say something. They will help you. And if you feel like you haven't been heard, go to the administration because they'll hear you. They have safe to tell in place, um, counselors in place. They do have the mental health, um, counselors there now for, uh, the high school. Um, and I also have a son with profound autism. If anyone's going to get bullied, it's going to be that kid. And I will tell you, in his school, he has never been bullied. He's been embraced in Payonee K eight. His, his classmates love him. The entire school loves him and they embrace him. But if I am, I can walk right in that door and say, hey, this happened. And they will work with me and they will work with the other families. You just, and I understand some people are afraid to go into school and to say something because they're worried about maybe their neighbor is going to be mad at them for saying something. But you are your children's voice. You are their parents. Go in, say something, talk to them. It's just communicating about the bullying. And try to find common ground with the school and maybe the other parents. And they do monitor social media because a lot of this happened on social media with my daughter. And, um, Officer Haskins actually came to my house and talked to me about it. And I actually have to talk to him again about it because it, it happens. It happens in the high schools, it happens in the middle school, it happens in elementary, probably more in middle school and high school, to be honest with you. But, um, they're very transparent with parents and they want to find a solution for everyone and protect everyone. That's how, just talk, just have a conversation, everyone.
Very good. Thank you. Sheldon?
I'm sorry, I'm going to ask you to repeat it.
No problem. How should, how should the district respond to threats of violence or bullying, including online harassment?
I do think, in me listening to students, teachers, um, and parents, that it is something that we're going to need to address. Um, again, sometimes the word bullying and there's some, you know, it's hard to define some of this stuff and what's bullying just, one person is not bullying to another. But there's a lot of people feel like it's going on. I've had students tell me that it's distracting in their class. I've had teachers tell me it's very distracting and they have trouble teaching because of it. Um, parents feel the same way when their kids get home from school. So, we really need to listen and try to figure out what's going on. I, this is one thing that I really, myself, would like to address in our school system because I've talked a little bit about getting back to basics of education, getting, pushing out some of the distractions. This is one of the distractions. So, I've been thinking about this a lot. And I think we're going to have to build somewhat of a task force with principals, administrators, and school board members, community members. We need to look at some of the schools that are not having as big of a problem. And most of them tend to be some of our private schools. But let's emulate what they've got going on, if it's working. And again, we're building resources across this state. And I believe that we can pull these resources together. And this task force could be at our local level, but let's get everybody in the va, the state involved. And let's have a symposium, let's have something where we all get together, brainstorm so that we know, um, legally where we stand within state laws. But let's start building a plan, let's start educating our kids, our families as much as possible, and push back on any bullying that's happening. And I'm talking about everything. If it's, um, if it is cyberbullying, again, we've, we've got some local laws and state laws and whatnot that will take care of, of some of that that should be followed. But we need to actually, um, really delve into this and fix this problem.
Thanks, Sheldon. Deanna?
My answer is immediately. Start taking action immediately. I have had, um, parents and students specifically talk to me while I've been campaigning. And I have actually, again, went to Superintendent Gibson to find out some information to help navigate those. And, um, I have to tell you that, that it is taken very seriously. And, um, but sometimes it doesn't happen fast enough for a parent who is watching their child go through it. Or in the case of Ms. McGavin, she, I mean, there is delay in response sometimes when you feel offended by a situation. I work in draft horse rescue. I was just telling Autumn earlier, I get in a lot of trouble quickly because I don't tell people what they want to hear. And they, I, I have gotten chewed out multiple times for what I do in the draft horse world. And it is not for the faint of heart. I have to be true to myself. I have to know that my value system is intact. And then I, it's, if it's personally directed at a student or a teacher, um, staff member, then I have to go and advocate, right? Be the voice. Um, also, I will tell you, this is near to, and dear to me because I've had a few, a handful, it's not a lot. But I've had students come to me because they were being bullied by a teacher in our district. Different situations. I had the unfortunate opportunity of listening to one young man tell me about the situation. And his response, I said, okay, have you went to the teacher? Yes. Has your parents went to the teacher? Yes. And I said, so how do you feel? And his response was this. That, I'll tell you, about broke my heart. I don't want him to resign himself to the fact that he's not going to be heard.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Last question, starting with Autumn. What role should the district play when it comes to LGBTQ plus inclusion in the schools? Examples include gendered restrooms, locker room usage, sports team participation. What role should the district play when it comes to LGBTQ plus inclusion in the schools? Examples include gendered restrooms, locker room usage, and sports team participation.
Of course, I get the hottest question.
I know, sorry.
For the whole night.
I was dreading it about three questions. Yeah. It's the luck of the draw.
I'm going to circle it back to, uh, my pillar about budgets. Finding the budget to make sure everyone has, I guess we'll talk about bathrooms. Um, the state has their own policy, correct, that, um, is, I believe it's about bathrooms. So, it's, the state is handling it. Um, goodness gracious. Um, I am about inclusion of all students, obviously. I think every student should be able to learn safely and securely. But I also understand the concerns of the parents about, how to say it, boys and girls' sports. I understand that, I do. Um, as a female, I don't want to compete against a boy. I'm going to lose. Um, the bathroom situation, has anyone gone into the school and talked to them about it? Because I have. Um, they say it doesn't happen in our district. I have not gone to any other district. They say it doesn't happen, um, and that the students have no interest in being in boy or girl bathroom. But, um, like I said, the state has, is handling this right now for our state. And I know there is another, um, district that's trying to fight that, but civil rights are really in it. But, um, it's none of my business what you do at home with your family and how you identify. Um, that's a family's concern or family's business, parent business. Um, it's none of my business, but it is my business if it affects my children and other children. Families deserve to be heard how they feel about the situation. And I have talked to quite a few families who were concerned about it because their, their children were in the elementary age dealing with it. So, it, I thought it was just a high school, middle school situation, but, um, so, is it for me?
You hope? So, we need to wrap up.
Yeah, well, you know what? That was a good ending. We'll have the hottest question of the night, I get first. I'm the most nervous. Sorry, everyone.
Sheldon, you good with the question?
Um, go ahead and read it one more time so I make sure you got all of it.
What role should the district play when it comes to LGP, LGBTQ plus inclusion in the schools? Examples include gendered restroom, locker room usage, and sports team participation.
Okay. Um, I've, I've heard a lot about this from my constituents and, and people. And, um, so I'm going to follow, you know, what they're looking for a little bit. And I believe that, um, you know, what people do in their, their home life, whatever they, they want to do, I don't have a problem with that. Um, I think the school district has done a great job with some of the bathrooms that we have because they have individual bathrooms, um, that, um, LG, um, PDQ can, people can use. Um, transitioning students, whatever it is, they can use them. And I think, um, that has set us up very well. I think we have to be on top of it as, uh, administrators within the school itself, principals, teachers, et cetera, because I do, I've recently heard that there is, um, possibly, um, a child going into the opposite sex bathroom. And I think we got to just make sure that that's monitored and that they use the proper bathrooms. I do not believe that women should be playing, or men should be playing in women's sports. I think we need to keep our young women safe. And, um, that's, I, I think safety is the, is the first and foremost important part of this. And I don't, I don't believe that's the road we should go down. I just, I think we need to keep women in women's sports and men in men's sports. And, and then if it's, um, you know, I think this is another distraction that's going on in our school systems and with some state agendas, okay? I just don't think, I think if there's somebody wanting to transition or and they have the, they want to change their name, we allow that per policy, you know, one time. And we don't make a big deal of it and we, and we move forward and try to keep as much of the distraction with all this out of the school. What's more important is reading, writing, math, um, science, et cetera, rather than something like this. So, um, I, you know, I definitely think we try to lower all of the information that's, that's out there. And if it's coming up in some of our curriculum materials, I just don't believe it belongs there. I think the basics of education is where it belongs. And some of this, um, outside, um, agendas do not belong in the school system or our school materials.
Okay. Are you good with the question? Okay.
So, I am opposed to boys in girls' sports. I am opposed to transgender, um, individuals using an identified gender locker room. I do know that I have actually asked and been told that there are, um, bathrooms available that are, you know, just like a, a family bathroom. So, there are, there's already accommodations, um, within our district buildings for a, a situation like that. But I am, I am opposed to, um, boys competing and sharing locker rooms, uh, with girls and vice versa. Um, I want to hold up those precious minds and gender is part of protecting that. Now, they, again, have family values and I have my own values, right? So, I'm not going to infringe on their value system. This is about an education system. And I care about literacy and I care about raising the bar for kids so they can excel after graduation. I will try to do that safely for everybody that beckons the halls. And I will listen to that. And I do not want policy that is over on the front range coming over here because it isn't here right now. We don't have these major issues. But a lot of the people that I talk to are concerned because they listen to the news.
Okay. Are you good with the question?
Yeah, so I, I think your question is mostly about how, how do we be inclusive for all our children? And it's specifically talking about, we've already talked about locker rooms and, uh, single, single bathrooms that we have used as accommodations. And that's kind of been done well in these schools because this district in particular is not going to be accepting of any further integration. What I don't want is to see these children pushed to the side, to be told they should be invisible or to ma, be made to seem insignificant. Now, as it goes with sports, they, people bring up transgender participation and I think it's important that we start with the basics, that girls deserve fair opportunities and that that is part of Title IX and that I completely support that. But this discussion gets framed around safety and that's not the issue. So, we're talking about fairness and competition and things like physical advantages that come with puberty, such as strength and, and speed and things like that. And those are legitimate questions and the state and the district, everybody needs to be talking through that and coming to a conclusion. My question to the people here is, why are you turning this small, small group of students, of children into scapegoats for your politics? They do not pose a safety risk. And the district is more than capable of taking care of any issues that may arise. CHAZA has clear processes for re, reviewing transgender participation and leaves the final decision to our district. Our district has procedures in place to evaluate and decide on a case-by-case basis. So, as a board member, my role is to ensure our district follows the law and supports our coaches and treats every student respectfully. We can protect, we can protect fairness for girls without turning this into a political or moral battle. The goal is to keep sports a place where all students, all students can learn discipline, teamwork, and pride.
Thank you. Okay, so, earlier we discussed closing statements being one minute, but we have plenty of time. So, we'll go two minutes. Um, and we will start with Autumn.
Are you ready?
Ready.
As we close tonight, I want to thank Delta County Independent for hosting this forum and everyone for here for engaging in a conversation that truly matters, the future of our students. What you have heard throughout this campaign are three very different visions for educate, for education in Delta County. On one side, there are bo, voices, maybe I should have took a drink of water, sorry. On one side, there are voices focused on partisanship and politics. On the other, approaches that too often overlook the realities facing our classrooms. I represent something different, a path rooted in common sense, compassion, and collaboration. I'm not running to score political points or to push an, an agenda from Denver or Washington. I am running because I have a senior at North Fork High School, a third grader and a second grader at Payonee K eight. I am the only candidate with real skin in the game, the lived daily experience of a parent in, in our district who understands both the triumphs and the challenges of our schools. My campaign is built on four simple, steady pillars. Put students first because every decision must help children learn, feel safe, and belong. Support our teachers and staff because they are the foundation of our schools. And when we invest in them, students succeed. Use our buildings and budgets responsibly because, because stewardship of public dollars is not about politics, it is about priorities. And keep governance open and accessible because transparency and trust are the cornerstones of good leadership. These are not partisan ideas. They are community values shared by parents, educators, and neighbors who are, who care deeply about this valley and the children who will shape our future. who are, who care deeply about this valley and the children who will shape our future. I believe in strong families, strong schools, and a strong Delta County. And I believe that when we work together with honesty, accountability, and respect, we can create a district that serves every student. I am Autumn Nguyen, and I would be honored to earn your vote to represent District Five on Delta County School Board, not as a politician, as a parent, an advocate, and a voice for common sense leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Autumn. Jennifer?
So I'm kind of confused about skin in the game. I think every person in this room, and indeed in this community, has skin in the game on how these children grow up and become adults. Whether it's through paying taxes, through having children, through having had children in the school district. But I hope that we all feel like we have some skin in the game. Serving on this board has been one of the most meaningful things I've ever done. You get to see how every decision, big or small, touches real people. The bus driver who gets the kids home safely, the teacher who stays late to go to a soccer game, the custodian who knows every student by name. And that's what keeps me grounded. This isn't about politics or slogans. It's about showing up, doing the homework, and keeping our schools strong and steady throughout whatever comes next. In my next term, I want to keep improving outcomes, keep our finances healthy, and keep every community's voice at the table. I believe in teamwork, accountability, and the kind of planning that doesn't just get us through the year, but sets us up for the next decade. I'm Jennifer McGavin, and I'd be honored to keep serving Delta County students, families, and staff for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Adina?
Thank you both for spending the time to be with us today. I appreciate it. I am an idealist. I don't take no for an answer very well. And I think that has served me pretty well in the over fifty years of my life so far. So I will bring that to the board, along with the fact that I love to find out answers. I love to listen, and I think I'm getting better at it every day. And I am not willing to give up on the kids in our district, or the parents, the taxpayers, administrators, and the board. I think we can all work together to raise up a district that is looked at all along the Western Slope as being one to mimic and to come and sit and learn from. I think we're right there at it, and I want to be a part of that. I've talked a lot about all of the things that matter to me. One thing I didn't address was volunteers. I care a lot about the connection between generations because I was, in a lot of ways, raised by my grandma when I was young. And the values that she instilled in me are things that were just nuances that I was able to glean from by just being around her and listening to her and cooking with her. So the generations coming together is really impactful to me. And I think that we can do that through volunteers in our buildings. We already have volunteers there. It's not like I'm asking for something that magically doesn't already exist, because it does. But I want more, a lot more. I want them to be helping teachers so that they are freed up to do the one-on-one work because that's what they were educated to do. I am Adina Kreitz, and I ask for your vote on November fourth. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to start off by saying, again, I wish Christina was with us, was part of this panel so that we could, we'd talk about stuff. And my heart goes out to her and her family, so I'm going to say that one more time. Through this, it's been asked of me to bring up the differences between candidates. What is it? What is it that you're different? And that's kind of where we were headed down the road and kind of some of the stuff I brought up originally. But I can tell you that if a community member comes to me with a letter that says I would really like this board to sign it and to help keep our young women safe, et cetera, I would probably really delve into that letter and try to research it and find out what's going on. It's not just a motion in the meeting to go through and just have the community come before us. We need to really listen to them and work on it. I would vote to uphold the religious rights of our school teachers. I will do that. And really, my priorities is getting back to the basics of education. I've said that multiple times, and pushing against outside agendas that are coming into our school systems. I'm mostly from Denver area, Eastern Slope. And I really want to work on some of the bullying. I really want to work on some of the problems that I think are causing a lot of interferences within our school, some of the disciplinary problems. And those are some of the stuff that I really, really would like to solve. And I do think if we get back to the basics of education, get rid of a lot of the distractions, our school system is going to be better off. And those are the things that I want to do. So I'm Sheldon Keir, and I will be more than honored to serve this community on the school board and put our community's values into the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. So this concludes the Delta County Independent, Delta County School Board Candidate Forum. I want to thank Lucas Vater, our managing editor, who did all of the legwork to get this put together. So thank you, Lucas. I want to thank the audience for attending and those who watched online and were probably watching as you fill out your ballots. Again, I want to tell Christina Hines that we are so very sorry for what her family is going through right now. And our thoughts and prayers are definitely with you. The candidates, I thought you guys did a great job, and thank you for stepping up for our community. We really appreciate it. School boards are the most volatile positions in this country right now. And so if you do win, we're here to support you, all of us, the whole community. So thank you again, and great job.